Good evening and welcome to the October 10, 2024, meeting of the Abington Township Board of Commissioners. And may I have a roll call, please?
Commissioners Brodsky. Rothman.
Here.
De Placido.
Here.
Laney Martin.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Weinberg.
Here.
Henry.
Here.
Depome.
Here.
Young Gertz.
Here.
Siegelmann.
Here.
Bowe.
Here.
Schreiber.
Here.
Bowman.
Here.
Vice President Vehe.
Here.
President Hecker.
Here. Thank you. May we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I have one announcement this evening, and that is that on the evening of October 1, the Board of Commissioners held an executive session to discuss a personnel matter. And with that, I will open it up for public comment on matters before the Board on the agenda this evening.
Good evening. I don't know if it's turned on. Is it on? Yes, okay. My name's Adele Cubell, and I live in Abington. At the September Board meeting, 14 questions were asked by citizens. Again, no questions were answered. Citizens politely asked for answers to the same questions, and they get no answers. Months and years go by, no answers are given. This absurd situation is considered perfectly fine by Commissioners. At the budget meeting, Mr. Hecker, you berated a citizen for asking too many questions, yet you refuse to answer every question she asked. The next step, pass the budget without answering any questions at all. Everything is being shoved through. Why, Commissioners, do you not support listing questions and answers in the minutes? Are you all against accountability and transparency? I have had no questions answered by Mr. Hecker or Mr. Manfredi in three and a half years, recent questions. What happened to the comprehensive plan? According to Mr. Manfredi, the plan needed to be voted on as soon as possible. That was a year and a half ago. Why were citizens that indicated they'd like to speak removed or ignored at the August meeting? This was purposely done by the host. When will the eight-month delay at Roychester Park be built? After a year and a half of requests, why has Mr. Manfredi refused to clear four-year-old garbage by Sasquatchana next to the Riddle Train Station Bridge? Homeowners there drive over potholes just to leave their driveways. Do you want these people to move? Under Mr. Manfredi's nose, 100 trees were cut down on Valley Road. Why have these trees not been replaced? Animals lost habitat. They were supposed to be replaced. It's been a little over a year. Why is the decade-long library promise for Roslin not being kept? $90 million in COVID money needs to be spent on citizen resources. The Bike Connection is not supported by the majority of citizens. The libraries in buying and preserving green space are highly supported by everyone. The Street Department has not had an adequate complement of employees in years. Mr. Manfredi wants citizens to clean dangerous streets, not providing needed services Mr. Manfredi views as saving money. 1,200 citizens signed petitions asking for just basic services. We're not getting them. Endless consultants and accommodating developers is wasting millions of dollars. And at this point, I'm certain that you have speculators lined up all over the place for zoning changes that are going to come. Can you answer any questions that I have asked? These are all repeated questions.
We do not have speculators lined up for zoning changes.
I've seen it on Rothly, and I believe on Cricket, there's somebody lined up, too. And certainly, there's somebody on East Inaruba Can I see lined up, too. Certainly. Around the hospital, certainly. What is going on with the comprehensive plan? People have been asking for months already.
Yeah, we're going to revisit that later in the calendar year.
That's all you can say about it? You said you were going to find answers and get back to us on it.
That'll be part of it.
Well, it's been a year and a half. People are waiting a year and a half for anything to happen with it. And we were told it had to be done as soon as possible a year and a half ago. It was an emergency, we were told by Mr. Manfredi. We would get back to it immediately.
We are going to get back to it.
What about the Roychester Park? It's a $2-million-dollar park we were promised.
It's coming. There were delays.
When?
All throughout the process, unfortunately.
No, when is it coming? What month?
I don't know.
Well, when you say in February, you're going to start in March, and it doesn't happen, and you were all ready for groundbreaking in February 2024, and then in March, you were going to do it, and nothing happened.
That's right.
Well, that sounds odd.
There were delays with the equipment.
And now it's going to be done, but you don't know if it'll be done in 2025, do you?
I don't know the exact date, but we'll get you an answer.
All right, the kids might outgrow the park that the parents came and thanked you for.
Yeah, yeah. All right, Ms. Cubell, your time has expired.
But what has happened with the Roslin Library Promise?
That's something that's still being worked on.
It's over a decade.
Understood. Please take your seat.
I'm worried that you're going to go through a lot of money, and nobody's going to get anything.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Please take your seat. Anyone else want to comment on matters that the Board is voting on this evening? Good evening.
Joe Rooney. I live in Ardsley. And Mr. Manfredi looks a lot better than he did. I compliment that improvement. Only joking. It was a bad joke, I'm sure.
I agree.
Okay, for the EAC, a couple of observations. When the EAC came up and they made that proposal about banning plastic bags, they brought up that fraudulent whale picture, and they then started talking about microplastics. And so I did a little bit more research on that. And this is for the new EAC person. Microplastics primarily, like 90% of them, come from tire dust and from paint. It doesn't have anything to do with plastic bags. So that whole presentation was nonsense. And you ought to get people to prepare themselves before they come in. So hopefully, the new AETC will address that. Also, I didn't get the EAC position on developing 40 acres of land with 150 row homes. So maybe the new EAC person will have something to say about that and our environment and the loss of over 40 acres of open space. Second, I was shocked to see Jay Blumenthal resign. And I hope it didn't have something to do with me asking that question about the $180,000 payment in the last check you all wrote. But can you also go over then what the replacement protocols will be? Is that if someone gets appointed, or is there a special election? That's a question I'm just asking, so hopefully, that'll be dealt with. And then next, at the last meeting, Fran Early got up, and he gave a great presentation on scarecrows in North Hills. And I was amazed at the end of the meeting that the President of the Board said, hey, can I have a copy of that flyer? Because I remember Ms. Adele bringing up petitions with hundreds of signatures of concerns of Abington residents, and the same president and the same board refused to take those positions. And I wonder if you could explain that? Because it seems pretty weird that you would accept paper about a scarecrow presentation in North Hills, but then something that actually concerned hundreds of Abington Township residents, you guys said were not accepting them.
We did accept them.
You said you were not accepting.
I said I didn't want her to approach the dais.
That's not.
Okay, so we'll review that video, because the same thing with the.
To what end, Mr. Rooney? We've accepted the petitions.
No, I'm trying to find out why you were so rude to Adele from the president's position, and then or you actually weren't here, I don't believe. I can't remember exactly. And then that was so willingly accepted before. I'm just pointing it out for people who are watching. I realize you don't care.
Of course. Please continue. Your time is almost up.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else here wish to speak? We'll turn to Zoom.
Laura Lehman. Laura Lehman, Bryant Lane in Meadowbrook. And this is an unbelievable agenda tonight. Almost nothing should be on it. First of all, before I get into that, I want to say I do want you to pass the plastics thing. Climate change is not a hoax, and the problem with plastic is not a hoax. They're all over the ocean. They're in our air. They're now in our lungs and our bodies. And I nailed something about that around. So please do pass that. Whatever baby steps you are willing to take is better than no steps at all. Albator has an application for the Mad Hatter and what the other name is of the brand name of their events. But they are absolutely not vetted. They do not belong on a voting meeting. The Board meetings are not voting meetings. You are required to give us a chance to see things and to comment on them intelligently. And so it's not true that you expanded our rights when you are taking them all away and taking things right to a vote without the public seeing them. And although you may have had a few meetings in the Art Center, the public is not aware of those. They're not on the township schedule where the meetings are held, which should be all in one place. You also need to remove the rehabilitation consultant. The same thing. You gave yourself the excuse that you had already previously approved the contract. But it's not the contract. It's the consultant from New Jersey that we have a right to review, to research, and to find out why we have a consultant from New Jersey and not local, because it's obviously going to cost more. And we really want to understand those things before they're approved. You also have things going on. 2241 Old Welsh on the working session tonight should also be reviewed, because you keep putting zoning projects on that have incomplete applications. Incomplete applications are supposed to be returned to the applicant. There's no way. They should be on any agenda, anywhere. And so when you put our comments all at the end of the meeting, where we can't, you have this many items, and items that we've never had a chance to speak about before, and you put them all in one meeting, you are taking our speaking rights away. And Commissioner Hecker, when I contact you, you don't answer me. You don't get back to me. You don't email me back. And you have taken away my representation in my government. This is absolutely unacceptable. You need to change what you're doing. And I believe it's time to go. That's what it's time for. It's time to go.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Lehman.
iPhone 12 Mini, you're unmuted.
Can you all hear me?
Yes. Can you please identify yourself?
Sure. Hi, good evening. This is Khaki Evans. I'm an associate member of the Environmental Advisory Council. And since some people have already commented about the plastic bags, I just finished driving nearly 400 miles. I just got home from the Provincetown, the seashore. So I'll get to that in a minute. But first of all, Nancy O'Neill is a fantastic addition to our EAC. She's got great and deep sustainability experience in working on projects. So not having her, and we have some other great new people on the EAC, and they're all very capable. So she's a wonderful addition. I also wanted to bring to your attention, if that's all right, that the NAACP Willow Grove banquet that gives scholarship for students, it's going to be on the afternoon of October 20. Our own Commissioner Spiegelman is getting honored. And I'm also very happy to say that the Montgomery Award on their 50th Planning Award, their 50th anniversary, the EAC got it in 2017. And now that we're in our 50th year of existence, we're very happy that the Willow Grove NAACP is going to honor us that same afternoon when Commissioner, or that same, from 3:30. So I invite all of you and all Township staff, and if you'd like to be my guest, I would be very happy to get you a ticket. Just send an email to Abington, or EAC@Abington. What is it? EAC? Well, you know. Send it to the EAC inbox. We'd be delighted to have you. I just want to talk about the plastics. When I was out in the Boondocks, I went to a, what's called the Dune Shack. You have to walk a mile out. And even though the National Seashore folks had done a cleanup of plastics the week before, it was very thorough. It's not coming from the good citizens of Cape Cod. It's not coming from the visitors. But the amount, you know, we brought bags with us, and we thought, ah, we're not going to find that much. They just had a major cleanup. And just seeing the syringes and the plastic bags, it's so important, because, you know, you need fossil fuels. You need oil to create plastic bags. So that really hurts our environment. I also want to say that the EAC, especially Karen, our chairperson, has worked very hard on this. She's done everything you've asked. I think you'll find overwhelming evidence. And they've also put the words in. The wording is really to make this a successful ordinance. It would really be great if we could get this passed by January, because that's when so many people go to the stores or actually if we could somehow get it passed before December, when people go shopping, because that's the way successful businesses do it. They get the signage up in the businesses, and the wear, the grocery stores and all that do that. So I'm asking that if there's any way you could put it up. I think that you'll find overwhelming evidence to support this. And again, I saw with my own eyes yesterday and the day before, you know, how terrible these plastics are affecting our environment, not only locally in our waterways, but also, you know, throughout the world. Thank you very much, and I appreciate it. And I hope to see you at the NAACP Awards banquet. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we will move to the consent agenda. And for that, I will turn to Board Vice President Matt Vehe.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for passage of the consent agenda listed as items A through G. All right, so move second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The consent agenda carries. We have no unfinished business this evening, so we will move right into new business. And I will once again turn to Board Vice President Matt Vehe.
Thank you, Mr. President. First item is BOC-07-101024. Motion to adopt ordinance number 2219, amending Chapter 49 Vacant Property Review Board as Section 3 Vacant Property Review Board, subsection A, and repealing all inconsistent ordinances. And I so move second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions for members of the Board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
May I ask a solicitor question before proceeding? Thanks. So we have the Hold Harmless Agreement and the Venue Hire Agreement, consecutive items on the agenda. If we agree to the Venue Hire Agreement, I'm not sure the hold harmless is necessary.
You're correct. The Hold Harmless Agreement was done earlier in the week in the event that we weren't able to get everything done with the Venue Hire Agreement. The only thing we would have to do is if we don't approve the Hold Harmless Agreement, is I believe that there is an exhibit that is part of the Hold Harmless Agreement that isn't part of the Venue Hire Agreement. But that'll be a simple amendment that we can make that will make it an exhibit to the Venue Hire Agreement.
Okay. Then my proposal is to start with C, Venue Hire Agreement. See if we can get a majority there.
Okay, sounds good.
All right. Next item is BOC-09-101024. It's a motion to approve the Venue Hire Agreement with the Abington Township Fever and the Abington Art Center. And I so move second.
It's been moved and seconded.
Commissioner Hecker, I'll be recusing myself from this vote as my wife is the resident artist for the Abington Art Center.
Thank you. Commissioner Weinberg, do you want to say anything?
Yeah, I want everybody to know that there was a this involves something at the Sculpture Park. It's a light and sound show with a vendor coming in. It's going to be from November through March with half the week. Only during nighttime hours, the lights to be off at 10 o'clock. We had some concerns from neighbors. The vendor came in, and the Art Center came in on two different occasions for informational meetings and to answer questions and address concerns. The first one was more well-attended than the second one. There was very few people in the second one. I can tell my fellow Commissioners that I have no issues at this point with the agreement and allowing this to go forward. I think that all the questions have been answered for the neighborhood folks, mostly Ward 7 folks. And it's sufficient for me. And I live in that neighborhood, so that I don't believe this is going to be a nuisance. I think this is going to be a good thing. I think it's going to raise awareness for both the Township and the Art Center. And I'm going to urge my colleagues to vote for this.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Weinberg. Are there comments or questions for members of the Board? We do have folks from the Art Center here tonight, if there are any questions. No? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. So what's the technical way?
Again, with the understanding that we'll be slightly amending the agreement to include one of the exhibits, the Hold Harmless Agreement is not necessary.
Okay, so we just strike it?
Yes, we just move on.
Thank you. The last item of new business is BOC-10-101024. Motion to accept the resignation of Jay Blumenthal, tax collector effective December 31, 2024. And I so move second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions for members of the Board? So Mr. Blumenthal had approached Mr. Manfredi and I a couple of months ago to signal his interest in retiring at the end of the calendar year. And so this sets in motion a process. We will be accepting applications for the position of tax collector. And that appointment would take effect on January 1 of next year. The individual who is appointed into that role would have to run for the position in the next election, which would be next year. So any other questions? And we'll have a chance to honor Jay's service at a later date this year. Was Jay on? Jay, do you want to say anything before we vote?
I thank you. No, thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Jay. Okay, all those in favor?
Tom, it's been a great nineteen and a half years. That's pretty much what I want to say.
That's pretty impressive. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
And that concludes the new business this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you. We'll now turn to the Finance Committee. And for that, I will turn to Finance Committee Chair, Commissioner Stuart Weinberg.
Thank you, President Hecker. The first item and only item is FC01101024. Motion to approve the August 2024 expenditures in the amount of $3,460,435.59 and salaries and wages in the amount of $2,365,138.62 and authorizing the proper officials to sign and approve invoices and supporting documentation and payment of bills and contracts as they mature through the month of November 2024. And I so move second.
It's been moved and seconded. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioners Brodsky.
Yes.
Rothman.
Yes.
De Placido.
Yes.
Laney Martin.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Weinberg.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Depome.
Yes.
Young Gertz.
Yes.
Siegelmann.
Yes.
Bowe.
Yes.
Schreiber.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Vice President Vehe.
Yes.
President Hecker.
Yes.
Motion pass.
Thank you.
And that would conclude the finance agenda items for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Weinberg. And with that, we will open it up for public comment on general matters of Township business. You have three minutes. Please come forward.
Is the microphone turned on? Ms. McElvany doesn't need to come up?
Ms. McElvany is working a different role this evening.
So it's kept on?
We can hear you.
Okay. All right. Adele Cubell again. It's already started, and I didn't even get my name up.
Stop it. Just reset it to three minutes. Thank you.
Okay. I have a petition to state, to submit. The petition states, and this statement should be written into the minutes, because accurate information matters. Abington Township manager Rich Manfredi has prioritized apartment complexes for eight years. Mr. Manfredi is inaccessible to citizens. It will be detrimental to Abington if Mr. Manfredi continues in any position after retirement. Over 200 citizens signed this petition. I will leave it right here for you to pick up. I have these bullet points from what I learned. Eight years ago, citizens considered Abington attractive with good services and schools. The neighborhood has gone down. Many citizens live in costly apartments that have mold, rats, mice, bugs, and drugs. Concerns have been put on the Abington request site. No one has reached out to the citizens that have submitted these concerns. 100 York has the same poor living situation. I meet people. There is no shortage of apartments, according to the people who live in the apartments. Many apartments are of poor quality and unhealthy to live in. The Township does not help renters. You assist developers. Moving can mean another unhealthy apartment in Abington. Neighborhood streets were never built for the dangerous increase in traffic. That is everywhere. Neighbors on Rothly have speeding drivers. Please address this. It's very bad there. The middle school and high school are overwhelmed and failing to provide a quality learning environment. Many parents do not want their children attending the upper-grade schools. To avoid fights, many students switch to cyber school. Increasing the student population will have no benefits to anyone. Most people rely on good public schools to succeed. The Eastern Road business area was charming. Now tattoo and smoke shops dominate. The new Wawa has a filthy parking lot that spreads trash all the way into the creek. Unique stores bring vitality. Hezbollah stores do not get the Township support that they should. The Maytag Laund- the Maytag Laundromat, located, excuse me, the Maytag Laundromat, located off of Eastern Road, is actually a disgusting mess. The parking lot needs to be repaired. It needs repaving. The sidewalks are a disaster. We're getting more and more crumbled sidewalks, and this is where a heavy amount of renters live, and they rely on that laundromat. A few words, oh, a few words about Joe Rooney. Joe Rooney does not rely on the dominating power structure. Joe is smart and actively concerned. He spearheaded a beautiful D-Day event. The event was moving and required detailed planning. Many volunteers contributed. Joe Rooney, for state representative, he can stand strong. And then I also have.
No, 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 we don't do. Please take your seat.
I have to say something about.
No, your time has expired.
I did not. No, I have it up there.
No, that's past. Your 16 seconds over. Please take your seat.
Okay. But I wanted to say something about Art Hayward's office.
You can leave that there. We'll be happy to read it.
No, it's not about you. It's about them getting what they, the recognition they deserve.
We're good. Your time has expired. Please take your seat.
Well, I'm not good. I wanted to thank them.
Well, you certainly can thank them.
I can?
Not here. I mean, your time has expired.
No, I wanted to thank them publicly.
Please take your seat. Is there anyone else here who wishes to speak?
You only give me three minutes.
I gave you three minutes and 40 seconds at this point.
And can you answer some of those questions that you didn't get to?
Please take your seat.
Will you email me the answers to the questions that you ignored for numerous times already? I'm bringing them back.
Please take your seat.
Will you please email me answers?
You will get answers. Now take your seat.
Okay, 100 trees. I want to know when they're going to be repaired.
For sure. Anyone else wish to speak?
Commissioner Bowman?
I'll wait till the. Okay.
Good evening. My name's John Slade. I live at 1925 Lycoming Avenue.
Oh, yeah.
Next week, at October 15, the zoning board meeting. There's an agenda item. It's an application for the proposed construction of a Taco Bell in Ward 10. That's 1901 Old York Road, which is the corner of Old York and Maplewood Avenue. That property is currently occupied with two tenants, a closet exchange, and a karate studio. It appears that the plans for the new Taco Bell would have egress onto Maplewood Avenue. If you have a chance to see the application, it contains 12 variance requests. And I understand that variances may be granted in the cases of hardship, however, again, this land is already built upon and occupied. this land is already built upon and occupied. And in the description of the relief requested, at least half of these requests contain the terms small lot size, small size of the property, limited size of the property. The application also attempts to justify the variances by stating that in many of them, what they propose is better than, that is closer to complying with the ordinances than what is currently there. However, I'd say if they're rebuilding, then better should not be the standard. The ordinances are, for a reason, at least I believe, and should not be a bartering session. Um, in addition, I understand variances can be granted, however, they will not be if the applicant created the hardship, nor should they be if they will alter the essential character of the neighborhood nor create nuisances. Uh, for anybody who's ever tried to exit southbound from Maplewood onto Old York Road, it doesn't work well. More often than not, people would be leaving this Taco Bell, coming up half a block on Maplewood, turning onto Lycoming, increasing the traffic there. Uh, again, if we're going to have ordinances, I would say let's stick with them. If times have changed and the ordinance needs to be changed, then that would be a better approach. To me, the need for twelve exceptions clearly shows that this is an attempt to put a round peg in a square hole. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Slade. Mr. Slade, I would encourage you and your neighbors to come out to the zoning hearing board meeting next week, for sure.
There.
Okay, good.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah.
Hi, everybody.
Hi. Um, my name's Brian Dugan. I'm on nineteen sixty-four Lycoming Avenue. Um, share the same concerns. Um, mainly, I have young children, uh, four boys and a girl, and, uh, we have a lot of kids in the neighborhood playing on the streets. Um, a couple summers ago, we actually had one of the kids get hit by an individual on a motorized scooter. Um, dodged injury, um, which was great, um, but my biggest fear is just the safety of the kids in the neighborhood. Um, it's a great neighborhood. We love it there, and I just think the, uh, how it's currently proposed, I think there's a lot of things that are being trying to be revised quickly, kind of forcing on the neighborhood that could, you know, encroach upon the, the neighborhood and the fabric of the neighborhood. So I think it's, uh, just in general, bad idea, and, um, something I think would be better if we left it, left it out of the neighborhood.
Thank you.
(applause)
Peggy Downs, nineteen thirty-two Lycoming Avenue. I'm here to go on record to state that as a neighbor also with my fellow neighbors, I'm opposed to the development of the proposed Taco Bell. I have concerns not only that the Taco Bell development is also, um, with regard to how this has evolved and come to this point, but also, obviously, that the zoning hearing board is considering, considering a number of variance requests, and that this is the first time that the neighbors are hearing of this proposed development. I, um, have concerns with regard to the Taco Bell. Um, uh, the zoning application, as was mentioned there, a number of variances. One of those specifically states that it's a, uh, fast food restaurant, which our zoning code requires forty thousand square feet. This is trying to make it thirty-three thousand square feet. Um, uh, excuse me. Yes, so the, the minimum lot size is forty thousand, and they're trying to squeeze this thirty-three thousand square foot, uh, variance into us. Also, with regard to the, um, um, number eight of the application, it doesn't seem that it's complete. The application states that everything must be completed before the variance would be considered, be fired by the zoning hearing board. Number eight of the application says, um, that it must include, like, the grounds for appeal or reasons, both in law and fact, describing in detail the nature of the unique circumstances and the specific hardship. I think the only hardships that are going to be experienced are going to be by the neighbors, imposed on the neighbors. There are no hardships for a developer coming in trying to bust through the existing, um, zoning code to make their profit and destroy our neighborhood.
Well, we appreciate you taking the time to come out tonight.
We do plan on coming to the zoning hearing board, but I think it's important to go on record, too. Why is this the first we're hearing of it? I also might just use my last minute to say-
Sure.
-we received notice on Friday of this, um, zoning notice of the zoning hearing board, and I did do some quick sketching or searching for, um, Pennsylvania zoning law, and it says that an, a conspicuous notice is to be placed on the property. I ran around and couldn't find anything on the property. However, right before I came, I ran over again, and there is a state notice, but it's literally four inches from Old York Road. It's kind of folded over now. The only people who would see that would potentially be a driver, but you couldn't stop and read that. It's Old York Road, forty miles an hour. There's nothing placed on the windows. There are no state notices outside of the existing businesses, nothing.
We'll talk to the code department about that, for sure.
Okay.
Thank you for coming out, and I hope you, you all come out next week. Is there anyone else in the room that wishes to speak before I go to Zoom? You don't have to raise your hand. You just come forward.
This is really great, and I'm just going to change, uh, change, uh, direction a little bit. I was kind of hoping that the, oh, I'm Joe Rooney, I'm sorry. I was kind of hoping that the board would say something about, uh, crime and what the police have had to do over just the last month. So just as a quick review, it started out on, uh, September sixth, that Dare Jackson was, uh, arrested for firearms tracking, trafficking, excuse me, and then on the eighteenth in the morning, we had a woman in Roslyn, uh, violently assaulted doing her laundry at seven o'clock in the morning, um, and the laundromat. And then later that day, we had a carjacking, um, right over there, and, uh, an eighteen-year-old and fourteen-year-old took part in two carjackings and one attempted carjacking, and they were apprehended. And what's amazing is it's right across the street from the bank that was robbed in, earlier this year. I can't remember the month, and the carjackers were headed back to Philadelphia. The bank robbers were headed back to Philadelphia. Then on the twenty-third, on the eighteen-hundred block of Horace, which is right there, I think, if I have my orientation right, there was a woman coming home from a night, I don't know what she was doing, but she was, she was followed home and broke into her house, and thank God her son had a gun, and he shot the guy. There it is, a good thing for a good guy with a gun, saving somebody. But there's two or three things I want to ask. First off, this is the first meeting since then, and you all ought to have enough time to discuss this a little bit. Uh, our police are doing a great job with these crazy incidences. I don't know if it's a Manning problem, and I know it's been brought up before, but do we have sufficient Manning? Why is this stuff happening? And I have to tell you, you could look at all of this geographically and say, the common thread seems to be Old York Road. But it seems like everybody's running back to Philadelphia after they, um, do their dirty deeds in Abington. And I'm going to ask the fourteen Democrats on the board, I already know the one Republican, is Krasner a possible problem with Abington's increased crime? People don't run back to places where they think they're going to get treated more roughly than they are here. So I don't know, but is that, and I don't know that I know everything that's going on either, but this is just the stuff that's happened in just the last month. And as a citizen here, I mean, I, I grew up here, was gone for thirty years in the military and whatever, and came back. This is crazy, this stuff. I mean, shootings, carjackings, bank robberies, all seem to be happening, and it's worth some discussion and worth some explanation to our citizens. And once again, I'll just finally say to our police officers, thank you. I'm sorry you have to put up with this. Thanks you all for your good work. And I'm sorry that the township manager doesn't take the time to say that, or the board doesn't take that time to say it, but we as citizens understand that, and we appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Rooney. Your time has expired.
Cut me off with my last word in banking police? Thanks.
Anyone else wish? Okay, Commissioner Bowman.
Words matter. Words matter, and in today's political discourse, um, you know, there's certain hidden meanings behind the things that people say sometimes. Um, Abington is a great place to live. We don't need to throw Philadelphia underneath the, the proverbial bus to make us feel a little bit better. Um, specifically a city that has a high percentage of African-American residents in it, that has a very historical and documented history of being socially and economically depressed. Um, so I started wearing this dog whistle around my neck because we've heard a number of dog whistles throughout the meeting since I've been appointed and elected, and it's unacceptable. So if you want to say something, then be clear and say it. But the dog whistles, the dog whistles, please don't interrupt me. Please don't interrupt me. Please don't interrupt me. The dog whistles will not go unchecked. I will not interrupt, I will not interrupt you, but I will use my First Amendment speech every time I hear a dog whistle. I'll just swing it around like this, because we hear you. We hear you, and I understand what you're saying. Thank you.
So what, what exactly, so is this-
We're not going to get into-
What do you mean, we're not having a discussion? This man made unsolicited insults.
Stop.
So what, what exa, so this is within bounds of our board to make so, make a, a unfounded comment like that over worries about crime?
What, what did I say was unfounded?
It absolutely-
Oh, no, we're not-
Dog whistles, that's not-
Yeah, okay, correct.
You're out of bounds. You're out of bounds.
You're out of bounds, sir.
Uh, no, sir, I am not.
Okay, you're going to need to take your seat.
Sir, you are out of bounds.
Take your seat, please.
Oh, that's for Raven. Look at you.
Tom.
Hey.
Sit down.
Please take your seat.
Observe the rules, please, sir.
This is silly season. Commissioner Bowman, and then we're going to get to the final comment.
Um, I agree with Commissioner Jeffrey Brown. Uh, also, my washer broke. I had to use the laundromat in Roslyn. Everything was fine. Beautiful place.
It's not beautiful. Decide not to go. It's a beautiful place.
It is not okay to yell out in the course of a meeting. It is not. You are disrupting our ability to conduct our business. You are on notice that if you continue to do this, you will be asked to leave. We're not doing this anymore. I'm not, we're not having a dialogue. I am telling you that you are one step away from-
Uh, after, you know why? You just kick it out and it cuts you in the middle.
Yeah, so just, you're on notice that if this continues, you, you will be escorted.
You will.
All right, enough. Please, let's go to the last resident.
(inaudible) stand up.
All right, enough.
Excuse me?
Enough.
No, I didn't say it yet.
Now, we are so far.
Yeah. Stop. We are going to finish this meeting and move on. Stop yelling out.
I didn't hear it.
Okay. We're going to move on. Please bring the next resident in.
Laura Lehman.
Wow, this is unbelievable. Commissioner Hecker, you know, again, you are calling on commissioners to undo the words of the people coming to comment to you. That is inappropriate in any speaking environment, any speaking environment, and Robert's Rules of Order is what we're under unless you decide as, as commissioner, you're going to change it. But you would have to decide that and say, I'm going to change these rules. This is a common thing, and it is defamation often, and it is absolutely unforgivable that you would run an Abington meeting that way. You need to stop it. All the commissioners need to stop it, and we need to get back to some sense of civility and answering questions and having comments respected that residents, uh, offer. I, I would like to start my comments now.
Well, no, you started them a minute ago, so please continue. That was your choice, Ms. Lehman. You have two minutes.
You realize you did that to me at the last meeting, right, or the meeting before that, where Mr. Bowman undid my words? It's, and of course, it's been done a dozen times. There is absolutely no excuse for that, and when you take up my time because of the actions that you have at the meeting, I am appealing to you under the, right, under the, uh, Sunshine Act, and you, we have a right to interrupt the meeting and talk about violations of our speaking rights, and that's what I was doing. You need to allow me now to start my comments.
Uh, you have a minute and twenty seconds, so please continue.
Unbelievable. So I-
I compare.
Residents behind the Taco Bell came tonight because their issue is that the Taco Bell never should have been on an agenda, like all of the things that we discussed tonight, and neither should twenty-two forty-one Old Welsh coming up at the working session. They don't deserve to be on the agenda because their applications were not complete. They didn't appropriately provide the law and the grounds. They didn't appropriately answer the, the hardship question, and the hardships that they had should have been directed by the zoning officer as illegal hardships. They're not hardships when they're created by the applicant. So there are a dozen things in that application that need to be looked at, and so my main comment to you tonight was going to be, how do we clean up the mess in the zoning hearing board where they refuse to provide any place in the meeting where citizens can talk about the procedure and the things that are wrong? Things like these people just hearing about this days before they have their meeting, like literally about a week, and that is not enough time for them to understand. It should go first to the Board of Commissioners, who sends it to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission then shows them what the issue is about. Okay? They, at the Planning Commission, then, they will recommend whether it should go forward, and then it used to come to a committee to decide if it should go forward. These people have a right not to go into a meeting. Mr. Hecker, you remember with twelve oh-nine Riddle Road?
All right, Ms. Lehman, thank you for your comments. Your time has expired, and with that, we will adjourn.